I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. It looks like everyone is in attendance except for Mr. Self.
And my client.
He's not here, yeah.
We haven't heard from him either way. I assume he received his packet. I assume he's going to attend tonight's meeting. Has anybody had any contact?
I did get a message from him.
All right.
Which four applications? One parcel and four lots. It's always been four lots. There were four houses on there.
We're going to go ahead and get started now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, for the opening remarks and the brief overview procedure, first of all, we wanted to have this work session because your caseload is very heavy and we wanted to do what we could as a staff to help streamline the process, not to take away time from the board or the public, but to kind of drill down on the staff's report. Within each case, you will see that we have outlined the criteria that the board would need to use to determine whether to approve, deny, or make special stipulations to each particular case. Because the caseload is so heavy, we're going to end this work session, go through each case, and identify for you what the variance is and what the staff recommended. And when we step out into the public hearing, when these cases come up, Howard will once again very briefly say what the variance request is, what the staff has recommended, and then he's going to stipulate the staff report because you all have the package, it's on the web, it's available to the public, but we don't feel that we need to go back through that report because the agenda is so lengthy. I'm also aware that there is a particular board member who would like to ask for recusal tonight from four cases, so when you go into your public hearing, he will need to make that statement and will need to leave the dais and then leave the room. So we'll need to do that at the beginning of the meeting.
Do it at the beginning of the meeting?
At the beginning of the meeting.
I mentioned at the beginning.
Yes, sir.
But take no further action.
Right, and then when the case has come up that you're concerned about, then...
You call the agenda. Well, it's the last four, so I'll just probably just leave.
And you can certainly do that, or you can come in this room or whatever you'd like to do, and we can come back and get you, but it's certainly up to you.
No point hanging around.
All right.
Because I have to leave the room.
Can I recuse myself?
Yes.
No, you can't recuse yourself.
In the last eight.
So basically, the purpose of the work session is to kind of go through the cases, to review them, and not for you to make decisions in this room, but to just be more aware of what is occurring to help you streamline the process and your thought process, and then opening the floor to the public hearing for you to make your final decision. So with that being said, we're going to move forward to the first case, which is 13041. Howard, if you would like to come explain that.
Sure. I don't know if you're familiar with the property. If you've visited, it's on Briarwood Road. It's an apartment complex. It's on the left side of the road, southbound, and the request is made to buy the apartment complex property. What they're seeking to do is transfer some of their land with claim to an adjacent property owner that's right next door to the east. The apartment complex is owned multifamily. The home property to the east, to which they want to convey the land, is single family. So there is an associated buffer between those two dissimilar zoning districts of 50 feet. Additionally, the apartment complex has a side yard building setback of 50 feet as well. The single-family home to the east has claimed a prescriptive easement to some land that they've been using for a number of years since the apartment complex was developed in the 70s, and initially, they had filed suit to try and, I guess, incorporate that land into their property. The apartment complex, in an effort to settle with them, they don't have a problem conveying the land to them at all, though they're more than happy to let the single-family house to the east take the land and incorporate it into their own lot. But to do that, they need variances from the city of Brookhaven, one of which is to reduce that buffer yard between the dissimilar districts, and on top of that buffer yard is the side yard building setback, and they're both 50 feet. They want to reduce those by 23 feet, down to 27 feet, and there was an attachment in your packet that shows. It's actually page number two of the two-page boundary survey. The second page of the boundary survey shows an area, so it's the upper two of the ones you're showing me right there, Jed. And then in the center of the page, there is a gray rectangle, in the center of the page, yes, there's a tall gray rectangle. Inside that is a fence. The fence is associated with the property to the east, the single-family property to the east. Everything inside that fence is going to shift to the property to the east, and it means it has to be carved out of the property to the west.
The fence created the prescriptive easement, right?
And it's our understanding that it's existed this way for a little, 20 years or more.
Yeah.
So that's how it's existed.
At the time that the property was developed, the gentleman who owned the home got permission from the apartment complex that he could use that land as his side yard, and I believe he had a garden over there, and he had fenced it in. The arrangement was a handshake arrangement that he would always be able to take ownership of that land. Effectively, they never got around to it, so he's, from what I understand, the ownership interest of that property is now trying to make that arrangement formal, and this is how they're going to make the arrangement formal. So city of Brookhaven has absolutely no objection to this going forward. The only impediment to this going forward is that our codes read that it can't go forward, so therefore, they seek a variance to allow him to get this done.
Are we going to propose any, or do you recommend proposing any limits to what the new owner can do with this strip line?
What the new owner can do with it? That will be governed by the zoning ordinance and what's allowable in R-75. Nothing beyond that. We haven't made a specific recommendation. We actually have two recommendations in there, one of which is that it be related to lot one of the Briarwood Hills subdivision, as shown on the survey you're looking at, and the other one is that they will have to record a duly-recorded plot of record to indicate that the land has been conveyed from the 10.79 acre parcel in the west to the residential parcel to the east.
So we're stipulating that remain one combined lot, right?
Yes, it won't be a standalone lot. It will be incorporated into the lot.
And they're asking for setback relief on the apartment side?
To make sure that the apartment complex property does not become nonconforming because of the lack of buffering, the lack of building setback in that section.
But we're not changing the setback on lot one.
No, sir.
There'd be no effect on that, but effectively, it would shift over.
The property line will shift over.
So that the setback line shifts over.
Correct. And there'll be a new, we're asking that the new tax record be recorded so that the right wing goes with each person.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any reason why you wouldn't want to approve this?
I could probably think of some if I had enough time.
I can't think of a reason why you wouldn't do it, why we wouldn't recommend it.
In this instance, or do you mean just generally? You mean in this instance?
In this instance.
No, not in this, we didn't think of one in this instance, then. I mean, I've visited the site. I've talked with some folks that, people called in and asked what was going on, and it was a non-issue once we described to the neighbors, the ones that called in anyway, what it was that was going on, so.
Is there any impact on the little corner that Judd's into their parking lot? That title is going to pass, too?
It's just what's inside the area that's marked with the line in the X's. That denotes a fence on a boundary survey, so it's 5100 square feet.
Oh, is it mitered off at this corner?
It's next to lot one.
Yeah, but it's mitered at the corner. It doesn't go all the way over here.
It's not the entirety of the shaded area.
Oh, okay. Doc, you see that? Here's what you're saying. They're saying that the line will be here, not over here.
Oh, so it's...
This is the fence line. The property line will follow the fence line. So even though it's shaded, this little top of the L stays with the apartments. See that? See this fence line? They're saying this doesn't go, just following the fence line. That makes a little better sense.
It's just basically the quiet enjoyment of what they already have, and it's just legalizing it.
It is.
So...
Okay.
Are we ready to move to the next case? Okay, number 13042, Sean Cash. Howard?
4142 Shawnee Lane. This is a request to reduce an average front yard setback. We're aware that if a block is developed with 60% or more of existing homes, if you go to establish a home on a lot, then every structure within 75 feet of your side lot lines needs to be averaged so you can determine what the front setback is for your home. Mr. Cash proposes to build a new home on 4142 Shawnee Lane, and to do so, he would like to reduce the front yard setback from the required 71.8 feet down to 45 feet.
Is the 71 the average, or is...
Yes, it is.
So it's unlike that other case we heard where we were kind of giving front relief to about what was about the average?
Correct. 45 feet is 10 feet more than the district standard in R-100, but 4142 Shawnee is an R-100 lot. Their front yard setback is typically 35 feet from a neighborhood street. In this instance, they're asking for 45 feet, which is 10 feet more than the district standard. If you're looking at it from the edge of curb, you can add about another 12 feet to that ballpark, so from the edge of the curb to the front of the house, it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 55 to 57 feet back.
Are you saying that 45 is the request and that that's 10 more than 35, and 35 is the typical standard?
Yes.
So within typical standard, but less than the average?
The average is 71.
The average of this property is 71 of the homes on either side.
And that's supposed to trump the 35?
It does.
Right. But this... Do we have any pictures of how it would look compared to the houses next door?
There's a one picture that's, you can see the larger house, and I would say that's, you know, this one, Jed?
Mm-hmm.
That's the only one I saw where you could see. An adjacent house, darn near.
Is the...
That's about a top, isn't it?
They'll have to submit a tree plan, right? I mean, those, before they can develop, they'd have to get permission before they took out any of the trees in front. Doesn't look like they'll have to.
Yeah, they've got it marked on their wish trees they're removing.
You can see the, I think we should have got some photos in the packet.
Yeah, we did.
We got photos.
It looks like they're shaving trees.
All the ones. Here's some, if you need to see some of the pictures, if you don't have the packet, you want to pass it down.
They're shaving all the trees.
The plant?
Yeah. Because the trees are so close to the streets, you know, they're clustered right there.
If you look at the second page of that site plan, it gives you their tree calculations. They're required to save 54 inches, but they're saving 323 inches.
This is the second page, in hiding the tree saving area. And what were the conditions that we recommended if the board were to consider it pregnant? Consider the tree?
It's the last page, but it's conditions of the site plan, and it is not a blanket variance to front yard setbacks in general, but it is a variance to construct the project as indicated on the site plan.
Tim, what were you saying about, what did you say about, what was the comment you made?
You were asking about the, Jed was asking about the trees, and you're required to save 120 inches per acre, which with the size of their lot, I think they'd said they're required to save 54 inches, but they're saving 323 inches, so they're going well beyond the trees that they're saving.
That's a really good point.
I assume they want to, it's just the way the lot is, they need to move it up to fit the larger...
I think it's also to meet the development pattern, and I think some of the other pictures on the street show that some of the, the homes are absolutely larger than, you know, what's going back is larger, and they are being slid a little bit forward to create more of a backyard than a front yard.
So you've gotten a depotated lot, and then the trend that's developing around it, so you're just trying to make the best of the situation that they have there?
Did anybody drive by this one?
I did.
Within my home, yeah?
It does not look like it would make anything appear to be out of place, especially with R-100.
That would be my concern, is that that other larger home looks like it's further than the rest.
I don't think you're blocking anybody's view. There's not a safety issue to it. In my opinion, it wasn't. It seemed pretty straightforward.
I think so, with all the cluster of trees they're saving in the front, it'll also break the profile and won't seem as close because of the trees.
The idea is that you, the rear yard of this home won't be the front or side yard of the neighboring homes.
See what I mean?
The rear yard of the home proposed won't end up being the front or the side yard of the neighboring homes. You won't look from your front window to the rear yard of the neighbor. They're closer in proximity than that.
Any other questions about this particular case? Can we move on to number 43? Mendel Circle?
Mendel Circle is a little bit of a different situation. You can see the variance exhibit is really the most telling of what the applicant turned in. What this is is a lot coverage variance request. Mendel Circle has a number of homes with lots in the neighborhood of 50 feet wide, and the depth is varying, but somewhere in the neighborhood of between 150 and 200 feet deep. The allowable lot coverage for these lots in this R-75 zoning district is 35%. With the diminutive size of the lots and the large size of the homes that are being built there, the homes that have been built up to today are almost, almost every one of them is nonconforming in that they have too much lot coverage, too much impervious surface, meaning home, driveways, sidewalks, accessory structures, things that don't let water flow through them. The home in question, 1103 Mendel Circle, is built, is being built?
Yeah, I'm sorry. How did those other homes, how were they constructed? Was it just, they got by us, or got by someone?
Anecdotally, I don't have any empirical evidence of this, but anecdotally, I've been told that this lot coverage requirement was not something that the previous jurisdiction ever enforced. It was not a consideration when they would approve homes to be constructed.
And I think you have tons of photographs in your package showing you what the other homes in the area...
What I don't think, couldn't really understand is how the home got a permit to be built.
Right.
But from speaking with the applicants when they came in, they will not be able to get their certificate of occupancy without this appearing.
So the house has already been built?
Yeah.
That is correct.
Yikes.
Home is built, it is about 80%, probably done, it's in the dry, they're doing a lot of finish work on the inside now.
Permit through the CAP.
Yeah, all of it from start to finish has been permitted through the CAP county. Their permit will...
The county will issue the certificate of occupancy?
No, the county will issue the CO, but at the time that the house was permitted, the building permit was conditional, that they were allowed to start construction, but they would be required to receive their variance prior to completion of construction. So they began construction, but at the time they were to apply for their variance, the city of Brookhaven became an entity, and so they weren't allowed to make their application to the county, and instead had to make their application to the city. That's how we got here this evening.
So the CAD told them to delay applying for the variance before they started building their house?
Essentially, they told them, they gave them permission to begin construction on the home without a variance in place, knowing that the plan that they had submitted was nonconforming to the zoning district.
Which is not a practice that Brookhaven would undertake, but we have inherited it. It's there, it's built, and the only remedy for them to get a CO is through this board. Right, so if it's approved, we're not condoning that type of behavior. Correct.
Yeah, this wouldn't happen in the city of Brookhaven. You wouldn't get a variance because of the city of Brookhaven issuing a conditional building permit. There's no such thing as a conditional building permit.
That's like a temporary pre-permit. You can't pull it back together much longer.
Do we have anything from the CAD stating that they granted this condition? Is that marked on the site plan? Is it approved by the county?
Not that I'm aware. We didn't get a copy of the construction drawings.
Okay.
But we have done a site visit, and this house and the lot coverage next door, you can't tell the difference, so it's clearly, when you drive in the area, this has continued to occur.
So this is, the gentleman submitted all these photographs.
It's definitely a smaller house than here, the other ones on the street, right? It looked pretty equal to the one next to it.
To the right.
It's not our collection.
1103, right? Well, if you look at the photo, it's...
Is the flow well?
I'm sorry?
Is the flow well and effective, remedy?
Absolutely.
So here's the subject house. It's much shorter than the one next door to it, but here's the one next...
The one to the right of it is the same size, isn't it?
Here's 1103.
And that's the one to the right of it.
To the right of it, the one that kind of matches, and it's got a side entry garage, which is...
And when you walk behind the houses, they look pretty much the same from the back.
So this is our house. So it's totally consistent. It's even smaller than the one to the left of it.
Yes.
And this is, it couldn't be a truer hardship, though, expecting to be one next door as well. How about getting caught in that?
I'm not expecting one, but I'm going to say that there was one to the left of it.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. I mean, you mean the one for 1109 or for 1009? Well, these are both under construction.
So...
So, and they're both over the line.
They look the same. So when they, I guess when they get ready for their CO, we'll find out, you know, whether it was the same issue in the CAD.
Is it the same?
Yes.
Actually, I need to get on here and do the survey. How they do the control of the option, too.
Any feedback from the other neighbors about this policy, emails he does send? No phone calls to me, no emails to me when they come out.
Glad they got their CO.
Anything else about number 43, Mendel Circle?
Nope.
Okay, number 44, which is Kusawati. Kusawati Drive, 2279 Kusawati.
This applicant actually is in the same neighborhood as the very first one of the evening. Kusawati is just a little bit east, further down across Briarwood as well. This is a request to decrease a rear yard setback. The owners plan to build an addition, an addition on the back of their home and deck as well. You can see on the site plan that they currently have a deck which is conforming, even though it goes over the rear setback because it's open and unenclosed. Open and unenclosed.
Could you hold on a second here, Howard? I'm sorry. Which drawing do you recommend is that the site plan?
It's after the photos.
And it's like...
So there's two site plans, the last two pages? You can see one that's listed as current site plan, and on the rear of the home, which is actually on the east side of the home, you'll see the little box there that's indicated with the word deck in it, that's an existing deck, and it does step over the 40-foot rear building line, but open, unenclosed porches and decks are allowed to go 10 feet into a rear setback and 10 feet into a front setback. So that's currently conforming. If you go to the next site plan, which is, I believe, listed with a little post-it note there that says "proposed project," they've drawn a larger box, which extends into that same rear yard. The plan is for the southern portion of the new box to be an extension of the home that will be enclosed, a portion of the home as an addition, and then at the deck, the open, unenclosed portion will be to the north.
So like conditioned space, or is it going to be screened in porch?
Yes, absolutely. No, it'll have siding and windows and...
No, it's screen porch in the letter.
Right.
When I spoke with Mr. Sonnenfeld, he said that it was going to be an enclosed addition.
I understood it to be the screened-in porch.
Well, either way, if it's not open, meaning, open would mean no roof, and unenclosed would mean no walls, so it has both of those. So it's, at that point, the requirement would be that they stay inside the 40-foot building line. They're going to go outside of that 40-foot building line, or go, the request for the variance, the C.O.
So they're taking the area that's shown on the as-built as the deck and pushing that out and closing it, and the new deck will be that extension on the L to the north, and that part will be open.
Now, I think if I follow you, what's listed as deck now, essentially, is not relevant. That's just from the drawing underneath. The larger box, which is drawn outside, the addition of the home will go all the way to the new line, not the, they're not just going to enclose the deck.
Right, it'll go here, it'll go, it'll go past the deck into the end, that'll be enclosed, but then this upper portion will be open, and that'll be the open deck.
Yeah, you can see the chimney bump out, from the chimney bump out north, it's my understanding that that's going to be the deck.
Right, right, the chimney bump out, well said. And what, this drawing doesn't show the total encroachment, I mean, how much of a setback relief are we giving them? Are they asking for?
Their staff report, they're asking for, from 40 down to 30.75, so they're asking for 9.25 feet into that 40-foot rear yard.
Between here and here is 30 feet.
Yep.
And they've got a sewer reason on it.
Howard, how is that going to compare to the other houses in the neighborhood, do you know?
I didn't see any other homes. I mean, it looked like all the other homes were conforming, from what I could look at from an aerial photograph. I saw everybody had a 40-foot rear yard.
Yeah, I got it. Yeah, I just put that back there.
Have any of the neighbors chimed in, how they feel?
I haven't heard from anyone. When you, this actual home is enclosed by a privacy fence in the backyard, so you really can't see what's going on on either side of you.
That's pretty consistent right now. What they have today is consistent with what the neighbors have today.
But I'm saying with their...
Well, I think that's a perspective that's...
Yeah.
I hope, I didn't go in the background.
I hope, I didn't, I was a little afraid.
I actually peered in this backyard through.
If you'll notice, that's not on the survey. That's not represented on the survey.
So the one next door is the same, it looks like it's the same, it's just covered?
I kind of see it the same way. It may be extending, it may not extend out as far as these folks' applications, just asking for, but I...
The letter from the applicant says, "With the current structure in need of repair replacing, we're seeking to replace the current deck with a more functional extended screened-in porch. All the houses along the street built at the same time as our house have a screened-in porch. We believe this feature will provide the same privileges enjoyed by the other property owners." So it sounds like the screened-in porch, if this is true, would at least be consistent in variance.
But it wouldn't matter, would it? The fact that it's screened in, the fact that it's a screened-in porch is really no different, from our standpoint, is no different than if they were going to enclose it with cinder blocks.
It's a setback, maybe, because it's a variance.
You might feel better about it because it's a screened-in porch for whatever reason, but...
Any other comments or questions?
I don't see any harm to the neighbors.
What is? So how many stairs is going to be left to their backyard, do you know?
30.75 feet.
That's what's going to be left?
And there's no stairs down... And there's no stairs down from the deck, apparently.
When you look at this picture, this kind of gives you a good idea of what their backyard's like. You can see kind of the trees around it, and then they have a privacy fence. Any other questions about this one?
I mean, I didn't go by, but I also feel like they have a full rear yard.
Right.
Were there any conditions of approval on this that you recommended, Howard?
There certainly were, I just closed them.
It was actually the site plan submitted. And also that it not be a blanket rear variance and it only applies to the variance tall.
So we think that kind of no blanket variance should be a pretty standard stipulation, right?
Yes, sir. Are we ready to make to the next case?
Yes.
Okay, number forty-five, which is twenty-six eighty-eight Osborne Road.
Twenty-six eighty-eight Osborne Road is a side yard variance request. And we seek to reduce the minimum side yard from ten point three, from ten feet down to two point three feet.
System on the carport?
This is, yes, sir.
Where's my description?
There's no set plan.
Well, basically, I think you got this in your package, their existing garage is already close to the side yard, right? And they're actually proposing to rebuild that. Actually, I was a little curious when I was out there, because there was a sale sign there. And I was wondering if they were trying to cure a nonconformity. But they actually proposing an addition here to rebuild that area congruent with the existing setback that they have already had. So that was my question. The garage looks as though it's already encroaching on the side yard. It is, it is. It's already very close to the side yard.
Yeah, they're seeking to reestablish it, but they have to develop it first. And technically, the terms of a nonconforming use, that if you disestablished a nonconforming use, you can't reestablish it. So what they're going to do is, they're going to tear down what's there. They're going to replace it. And if you'll, we've seen their construction drawings, I think they include it there. It should be a nicer product, is actually what they're going to go back with. I don't think they're going to expand upon the nonconformity in any meaningful way. Nothing about the way that the property is being used will change. But they did want to permit it in a conforming way, which means to get a variance beforehand.
It looks like they're doing a good job of making the roof for it, perhaps?
No, I think so.
Yeah, yeah. My only question, I had questions, but regards to the trees in the backyard? I know that they mentioned they want to keep some of the larger old shade trees. But it looks like, are they going to have to take down that really large mature? It looks like an oak, I don't know if it is. In this picture?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Are they going to have to take that one down? Because it wouldn't go back any further than we leave that tree, do you know?
Let me check the site plan real quick.
How wide do you build most of your garages? I mean, ten, sorry, ten.
Yeah.
For what?
Twenty or twenty-two?
I mean, it just depends on the plan, but normally twenty-two.
Twenty-two. So they're asking for twenty, so that's already kind of tight.
Right.
The tree plan is showing...
They're saying no trees to be removed from the site.
Right, and on this tree plan, it's showing that these trees are remaining with...
Yeah, there's a note right above the surveyor's box, this is no trees.
They're not really doing anything in the backyard. Now, I don't see the building up below.
Excavement.
Further in the backyard. So the tree that you're talking about is in the back, I'm sure that's a bit risked.
Big tree.
Yeah, I don't think so. See, and then also looking at how they sort of...
I can't, I can't. That third legend is not showing any trees to be removed.
See, here's where that tree is.
So they're not taking the house back any further?
Yeah, no, they're building it.
Okay, good. I can't see why it wouldn't be that I would do that. Looks like it's going to be a much nicer product.
Look what we got in with the door here. The next door house is setback pretty close.
And this is the elevation of the new addition?
Do we have that?
Yeah.
New package. This house?
This house is also kind of on the end of a row of houses where, so the side they're doing the work on is not right up against another house.
Which, what, an apartment building or office complex?
Condos.
Condos. And those folks are fine with it?
We haven't heard from anyone. So that's a good point. So it is where the garage is, that's the condo. Is that the condo next to it?
Yes, see, look. The big tract that's just installed by itself.
So in addition to rebuilding the garage, they're trying to move it forward?
Oh, thank you.
Put it even...
Put a second story on it, but it should be level with the front plate of the system. I'm going to try and, if you look at it today, it's actually offset to rear. It's going to go forward to the front plate of the...
This is the kind of thing that intrudes our community, you know? I'll never forget when Mayor Davis appointed me, at least, he said, you know, we want to kind of help people just to, because it doesn't hurt anybody and it helps somebody.
Right, especially with some of the property.
It's totally just the opposite. Actually, I think the old work around Cap County was going to apply for the variance, just leave that one wall partially standing, and you could tear down the building and say it was...
Seen all the tricks on the tree.
Yeah, so you would leave one wall standing, tear down the other three, build one, then tear down the fourth wall.
Okay, any other questions about the garage addition, number forty-five?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Number forty-six, twenty-six eighty-four North Thompson Road.
This is actually the first of two requests related to the same property. One is for a front yard variance, one is for a rear yard. The first one is for a front yard variance.
Can I explain why I asked for two different cases?
Yes. This request is made, and if you'll notice, the site plan, which is later on after the application, the first is essentially an average front yard setback. So they're asking for relief from the average of the front yard setback from, for just eight feet, from forty-five point five-six feet to thirty-seven point five feet. This is a R seventy-five lot, which has a district requirement of thirty-five feet. So they're almost asking for relief to go up to the district requirement. And then, not to get too much into the second one, but the second request is for a rear yard setback, and they wanted them to be treated separately so that if one was approved and one was not, they would know exactly where they stood with the idea of being able to construct their home. The front yard setback is a reduction of just over seventeen percent. Again, it's based on the idea of the location of existing homes on the same block within seventy-five feet of the side lot line. The average of those homes becomes the average of your home, becomes the front building setback line for your home. In this instance, we've chosen to recommend that the board view the application favorably with what I've considered to be the standard comments that if the conditions of the site plan submitted to as a function of the application is that it not be considered a blanket setback to all front yard setbacks, but only a variance to front yard setback for the construction of this home as indicated on that plan.
And in your package, you have this plan, but it shows you the houses on each side, so you can see where they are, if you want to see it. Okay.
The one on the other side's kind of...
The house north is diagonally over lot.
Right. And this lot also gets much more narrow at the rear, so it has a tendency to need to push the house forward anyway. Whereas the Parker House next door doesn't appear to have the squeeze in the back lot line. See, as you go like this, it kind of forces you this way when that lot gets narrow in the back.
And this is where the front will be?
Yeah.
So it'll be in line with this one over here somewhat?
Yes. Although it's in front of this a little bit, this house has a wider lot and didn't have any...
Yeah, actually, the front yard setback is more substantial than the rear yard.
This is the type of situation where, if these guys own jet...
We're talking about a run of one hundred and thirty feet.
It's interesting, Howard, because in the other weeks before this hearings, we would get a lot of extra emails from you. We'd get emails when people would object, we would get emails when neighbors would write in. I didn't see any emails that you had to forward to us because of anybody's comment or anything. Someone really had a wrong...
You'll know when there's a hot button issue, because you'll have a lot more emails.
Exactly.
Anybody's trying to put in a few hundred apartments this week.
Setback variance is really very sexy.
So we talked about North Thompson Road. Do you want to talk about them separately, or do you feel like we've covered both of them? Both of the various...
I'd like to say that there's something more complicated about them, because there really isn't.
Okay.
How many feet in the back, sorry, how many feet in the back were they asked?
Five feet is the rear yard, and roughly seven and a half feet is the front yard.
But that five feet too, if you look at it, it's just nipping a little corner of that, it's going five feet over.
Correct.
Two little spots that there...
Seven and a half of them?
I see what you're saying, yeah. The five feet in the back is only that, a little edge sticks over.
Can you do the math real quick? I did the math, but I missed it.
Right on the...
Correct, eight feet, forty-five.
Again, because the setbacks measured from the rear, the rear angles.
And then the last four cases on the agenda, which are forty-eight, forty-nine, oh-four A and oh-four B, are basically in your package, you'll see that there are four connected lots. But obviously, they're four cases. Howard, can I try and sign that?
And I think I can. But stop me if I lose you. I don't think it's all that complicated. What you've got are four existing lots in the neighborhood of Windsor, Antioch and Cates.
Wait, so there are three or four?
There are four.
There's four.
Four. Four. Not five, not three? Currently, three of the lots are oriented to front onto Windsor. And two of them are corners, because one's on Antioch and one's on Cates. And there is a through lot which fronts on both Antioch and Cates, but has no contact with Windsor. Now, not yet, right now, current.
Okay, okay.
The applicants have come forward with a request to reconfigure the lots. They're not creating more lots. When they're finished, there will be four lots. But their application is to move lot lines and change the orientation of the lots. What they'll end up doing is having two lots that front on Windsor instead of three. So they're going to dissolve that center lot and move those side lot lines together and make two large ones where there were three smaller ones. They're going to remove the backs, a little bit of the back property line of those lots that they just changed. They create two lots in the rear where there was one. So we started with four and we ended with four. They just have different dimensions. The reason...
Different dimensions from...
They have different lot dimensions. The new lots will have different lot dimensions. They will be wider lots and shorter.
Than what's on there?
No, than what's existing today.
Okay.
If you look at the difference between the existing condition site plan and the proposed site plan, you'll notice that the new lots are wider lots, but they're also not as deep. They're more shallow. And it just...
The existing condition plan is difficult to read.
Yeah, I'm right there with you. I've been reading it for a while.
But...
It is a little busy, because they have a tree plan on there, they're showing the utilities, the easements and the lot lines. And at that size, that scale, I probably have a larger one here that's folded up in the folder if you'd like to see a larger print version of the existing and the proposed condition. I can take those out more. The reason that they, I should say, all four of these variances are interrelated.
Sure.
Because to create one lot, you have to move the lot lines for the rest of them. The reason that they've been addressed the way they are is merely for reference. Because when the lots are ultimately developed, we don't know necessarily how they're going to be addressed. But if I want to tell somebody to go out and see a lot that's in the vicinity of twelve fifty-eight Windsor Parkway, we do so by the address. The tax parcels really encompass the boundaries of this project. So you have to look at this as not as four individual adjacent lots, it's one project that's just being bisected into four lots.
And it will be required to go through a subdivision planning process because it's four lots. And that would be, if this is approved, then that would be another step that it would have to go through. So for the fourth house that's being proposed, there... Howard, is there going to be another road that's going to be built cutting through, getting between Antioch and Cates perpendicular? How are they going to enter that premise?
I think they'll just enter it from either Antioch or Cates. I think you'll have these two...
Our expectation is that they will enter from Cates.
From Cates.
The front of the homes will face Cates, the back of the homes will face Antioch.
And one of the things that we've requested, if you do support this, is that we require a tentative no-access easement on the back of those two lots along Antioch, because a through lot is prohibited by our code today, even though you might drive through that area.
Cates is down gradient from...
Antioch.
No, Antioch is down...
It's kind of like this, Cates is here and Antioch's here. We've asked for the ten-foot no-access easement along Antioch. And the driveways will come in into Cates on two of the lots. Because our code currently prohibits through lots. Even though you drive through that area and you may see that the Cap County has allowed some...
Those are the four lots.
We can't allow that. So that's why we are asking for a ten-foot no-access easement. That's a question, okay? Not very...
Yeah, you can. I have the existing and all of this is larger, it's not clear.
We do by not a through lot. Let me show you on the plan.
I have a larger one.
It's basically also known as a double furnished lot?
That's the tax parcel also, which will let you see. Those are the, these are the existing four lots, number one, two, three and four.
And that's Windsor.
And that's Windsor. So there's three very skinny lots right there. And what they're trying to do is turn these three lots into two fronting Windsor and then taking number four, basically widening it and putting it under water.
Because it's definitely a house that can access from down on Windsor, that's such a busy road.
I have that. So a through lot is when, also called a double furnished lot, is when you have road here and road here on each side of your property. But our code prohibits a through lot. So where, if the board were to consider approving this, we would ask that you require a ten-foot no-access easement here to preclude them having a through lot. And their garage will be on the front and they'll enter off of Cates here.
That would prevent them from putting any kind of a garage up front?
Their garage will be in the front and they can only access from the front. There won't be any through lot access from Antioch, if you were to approve it. So does anyone here other than myself live close to this neighborhood? This intersection? Have you been there at eight o'clock in the morning or five o'clock at night?
I've driven down there, yeah. Many times, every day.
It's stuffed.
Yeah.
Absolutely stuffed. I mean, there's a traffic line that, you know, goes down Windsor Parkway, across history done living, impacts all the way down...
I'll sit there for half an hour.
Right.
History done living.
Right, so I guess in my understanding, while I was campaigning, the biggest complaint that I got from folks was stepping more houses in, right? Creating more congestion for people who've been there for a long time. And what do we do with regards to managing the transportation better, right? So how do we consider that?
Well, there are four houses there now, are there not?
It's empty lot.
No, it's empty lot.
It's level.
But there are four separate parcels.
There are already separate... They're already separate parcels.
That anybody could build something on.
Four homes could be built there.
Right.
So they're, you know...
With appropriate variances.
Right.
And that's, that's really where this is coming from. These are, these are substandard, non-standard lots, nonconforming lots. Two of them are quarter lots, which means that they have front yard setbacks attributed to, any property that touches a street has a, a front yard setback. So the, the, the bookend lots that are on Windsor, that have streets going up the sides, they have thirty-five foot front yard setbacks along Windsor and on the side streets, which renders those two lots nearly non-buildable. There's hardly any buildable area left on those lots after you apply the, the building setbacks. The, the request that's coming to you this evening is because of the zoning district and the existing lot configuration. There, you would not be able to build four homes on these four lots without a number of variances, so their options were rezone the property into a small lot zoning district, which would allow for more diminutive setbacks in a smaller lot area that would permit them to build a modest home on the lots as they exist today, or to keep the zoning in place, that is, throughout the rest of the neighborhood, and instead vary all the nonconforming aspects of their development plan. They chose to vary the nonconforming aspects of their development plan. In this case, it became front yard setbacks, uh, side yard setbacks along the street.
Right.
Interior side, well, I think they actually... I think they might not have actually applied for the one, yeah, they didn't need an interior. So they needed front yard, front yard on the street, rear yard, um, they asked for, there's a lot area for all but one of them, and, my computer went to sleep. Lot width, so lot width, lot area, and many of their setbacks is, is the variance request. And it is, um, they're being, they're being split up, variances are being split up, split up four ways, to recognize the fact, number one, that there are four lots in the project, and number two, that not all those lots require the same variances. So that's why they've been divided, however, all of them are interconnected in their lots, so they'll be voted on separately, but understand that each one has an appreciable effect on and of.
Right, so, so if I understood you correctly, what you're saying is that, because when I looked at this and went through all four of them, it was just that what they were asking for was closer to R sixty than what it's currently zoned for?
And we, we had a meeting before they, you know, made application, our code reads that we have pre-application meetings with folks before they make submittals for zoning actions, and we, we basically, I spelled out for them the same thing I just spelled out for you, there, there's two ways to get this done, you can rezone, or you can vary what's nonconforming, and they looked at it and, and chose to, to apply for the variances, but you're right, there is a way to get this done through rezoning, however, that's, that's just a different path, it's not better, it's not worth, it's just different, so it's for you.
And what would that path involve briefly?
The rezoning, um, there would be, you know, obviously, the signs would still be on the site, there'd still be mailings, there'd still be an ad in the newspaper, they would go to the planning commission for a recommendation?
Right.
And then they would go to the mayor and council ultimately for a decision on whether or not the rezoning would be approved or not. The rezoning would be contingent upon the site plan, much like what you have for you this evening. Then, if approved by the mayor and council, um, the allowable development standards in whatever zoning district they asked for would become the standard for these lots. The challenge of that is, it's such a small area, totally overall, I mean, we're, we're looking at something that's twenty-four, thirty-four, you know, an acre, about an acre. To rezone an acre in what is considered a very stable neighborhood, probably not the most sound planning practice.
And in addition to that, if, if they were to seek a rezoning, and if the mayor and council were to grant that, if there were variances needed, we do not have a concurrent variance process with zoning, so then it would come back to the board zoning appeals for you to consider variances if they need them.
So, if it were to be rezoned, it would have to be, you know, as you said, I don't wanna say, it would be, the restrictions wouldn't be stringent, right, it would have as many restrictions as...
Yeah, we'd have lesser setbacks, you know.
So, and then the downside with the community is that, that is what would become the code for...
For these lots.
For those lots, right, which, if we look, you know, fifty years down the road, what does that mean for Brookhaven?
It, it could be an issue, could be, I don't know. We didn't, we didn't do that analysis because they chose to do the, the variance, so we've, we've looked at it as it goes, variances are more technical in nature, comprehensive land use would be more spatial for the, for the zoning action.
But I hear your point, Tim, your point was, if I understood correctly, is that it's already four partials there, so four houses can be built there, so if we get a lot of feedback from the community, which I'm expecting to get when I start building these houses, because I live so close to them?
Right.
Is, you know, it's just have to be an understanding of, we didn't approve something that wasn't already approved to go in there, we just, we just, you know, help the, the reconfiguration for them to be built more aesthetically?
Well, you didn't increase the density, you didn't, no?
Well, and I, I think that, you know, with the fact that there are large yellow signs on the lot, hopefully we'll get some public head real tonight.
Right.
You know, regarding, I had a, and I'll, I'll let you finish that, but I have a question about the through lot portion in a minute.
Okay, that's it.
Would the no-access easement include pedestrian access, or is...
The, the point was to prohibit vehicular ingress and egress, unless it was an emergency, you know, emergency vehicle, but the point was to keep cars from coming in and out, um, along the double furnished lot.
And is that, I mean, just because the rest of the homes on Cates on that same side of the street have their garages in the rear?
On Antioch.
On Antioch.
Right.
So we're gonna put the garages on these on Cates then, or the garages staying on Antioch?
They're on the front of the house, it's a front entry.
And is the no-through lots that's in the Brookhaven code, is that something that Brookhaven added, or is that something that was in the DeKalb code that was adopted?
We carried it over from DeKalb County, and we exhausted that research, and we went in that neighborhood because there are through lots there.
Right.
Um, and the only thing that we could surmise or gather from that was perhaps they were nonconforming and allowed to use that, and maybe they didn't replat things in DeKalb County, I don't know, but, um, there was no provision for us to allow through lot, there's no provision to allow the board zoning appeals to consider a through lot, so the only remedy we could think of for that to preclude that was to require the no, no, no-access easement.
Okay.
The trees, there's only a lot of trees there, and right now, they're grassed in white lights, and they look really pretty at night, and I, I, there's about forty, but I saw, I guess, I'm guessing, but I thought come down.
My expectation, if they're gonna develop this lot, there, very few of them will be able to remain. They'll be, they'll be required to reestablish that density post-construction with landings.
Out of curiosity, what's the, what's the policy we've been for the, the no-through lot? Just to look nice, what's, what's the...
You know, I don't know how long that's been on DeKalb County's, um, records and books, um, so, you know, I don't know, and through lots are allowed in other jurisdictions, the only fact that surmises is that it relates to vehicular ingress and egress.
Do they really know, Brian, the reason?
Not, not that I'm aware of from the county.
Are they required to save a percentage of these trees?
To save them?
Do not get them in, in the woods.
You're required to save, you gotta have a tree plan, you're required to save a certain amount of trees per acre, and if you can't, then you, you have to put them up, put them back.
And if you can't fit all the required trees that you have to have on each lot, and you, you pay into the tree bank, essentially, a, a certain rate per inch, caliber inch of tree, gets paid back to the city, which we can then use to forest elsewhere.
So that's applicable to developers, or private owners, or everybody? Any other questions? Well, I hope that you found this to be helpful, um, because it was a lot of material to cover, um, and we know that it's gonna be a long meeting, and we're not sure how many people in the town, but we wanted to do what we can. We have some pizza? Would you like to grab a piece and some water, and, thank you for organizing. Oh, thank you, thank you all for coming.